I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I would like to welcome Thomas Crouch to the table. He is with the firm Waylon Thiler, and our new town council is Waylon Thiler, and he will be our key person. So just wanted to let the public know who the new face at the table was.
Thank you.
All right. Any public comments? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we'll get started with the first outdoor assembly permit for the Shelter Island History Museum. They are doing a reenactment of a military and revolutionary war-era military encampment and associated activities to take place on September 6th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I don't see anyone from the History Museum. Does anyone have any questions we need to ask of them? There were the cannon part.
So it's both outdoor assembly and noise ordinance?
No, no, we were looking at that because I mistook the asterisk as being a noise exemption. We're not asking for a noise exemption.
It's during the day, so it's not, you know, late night disruptive activity.
Well, it's your canvas.
They want to use the parking lot next door like they have been all season for overflow parking. So that's same as what they've been doing.
No one has any issues?
Pretty straightforward. It's attended two. Yes, on about the same day.
Six.
How many people do they normally attract?
Well, they're expecting at one time 200, collectively 500, collectively 250 vehicles, but usually 100 at the time. We have it on the special meeting agenda to pass out resolution on. Next item is Shelter Island Chamber of Commerce. This is for the duck race. Takes place this coming Sunday, August 24th, from 12:00 to 1:00. And they'll be using the public toilet. And it was broken recently. Hopefully it'll be back in service by the weekend. And I think we generally do perhaps have a police presence down there just because the ducks get dumped on one side of the bridge and then all the kids run over to the other side of the bridge so that they can watch them come underneath. So we do need to close the road temporarily so that nobody gets run over. But it's a very short road closure. If there's no objections on this one, we'll put it on for the special today as well.
I'm just here.
Oh, I was gonna say, I just saw Alex. Well, I think she's wrangling little people. We'll just pause for a second to see if she actually wants to come into the meeting. Does she want to come in or?
Okay, all right. Okay.
Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is sign code. And Meg, you asked to put this on and you've given us some edits.
Right.
Do you want to go through them for us?
Yeah, I'll do just a brief run-through. I wanted to kind of put this in front of the board because lately we've had a lot of requests to put up signs come before us, or a lot of complaints about a tremendous amount of signs being put in places. You know, we've got exterminator signs and film signs and all kinds of signs. And so there have been a lot of complaints lately about it. And so I went through our code and I just made some minor tweaks and I figured everyone can look at them and let me know what they think. But just the first one is in section B where it says permitted signs in all zoning districts must be located on premises to which they apply. That makes sense, but then in that same section talks about temporary signage, and temporary signage doesn't necessarily have to be about whatever's located on that property. So having temporary signs in the right-of-way doesn't really seem to make sense if the signs are supposed to be located on the premises with which they apply. So my recommended edit here was to remove temporary signs from the public right-of-way. So just make it so that if you want to put up a sign, it has to be on your private property.
Or someone's private property with permission.
With permission, but not on town property. Because it is problematic when signs are up willy-nilly, they could be blocking line of sight on the sides of the road. It's problematic for the highway department when they're trying to mow and keep their shoulders clear. There's also a section in here where it says in the current code that you can, let's see, you can get permission from the town for placement of signs in the right-of-way, but that seems problematic because it's, I have trouble seeing how the town can truly deny somebody the ability to put a sign in the right-of-way based on the content of that sign. That's a freedom of speech issue, I think. And so I think it's easier to say no one can do it rather than try to select who can and who can't. You know, I don't think we need to regulate what signs people put on their private property, but you know, signs should be placed 10 feet from the road, so outside of the right-of-way is one of my recommendations in section 5B. 5B at the very end. I just added signs should be placed at least 10 feet away from any public road is what it should say, or outside of the right-of-way. And then temporary signs or posters may be placed on private property, but not in the right-of-way. So C following that, I added that. And then the very last thing I added was in that same section, I added an H, which was no temporary signs are permitted on town property or in the public right-of-way, only signs installed by the town, county, or state are permitted in the public right-of-way, signs that direct and control traffic, provide information for the guidance of the public, promote the public safety and welfare, or promote community awareness and events. And those would be town-sponsored community events. So that's something to think about. There are a few things that happened that I know, I kind of put that in there to capture Memorial Day and Ladies' Day when the Legion puts up the signs naming all of our veterans. That's kind of a community awareness situation. I don't know how we could, because I don't want to see that go away. I think that's a good thing for the community, to be aware of the people who have served for us. So I want to find a way to make some exceptions to the rule, but I don't necessarily think that we can draw the line at business versus private, or you know, I think it needs to be like a community awareness or a community event or some kind of promotion of residents and community in order to get some kind of exemption to put signs on town property. It's my only thought. So like town-sponsored events, we should be able to advertise on town property.
Just like we've got the vigils going right now.
Right. So this is what I was brainstorming, like everyone to look at it, see what you think. If you have better recommendations, these are just kind of what I came up with. Let me know what you think. I think it would solve some problems because a lot of times signs don't get picked back up, they become litter, you know. Kind of hopefully prevent some of that. And it'd make it easier for the highway guys when they're doing a job, if someone did put up a sign where it doesn't belong, they can just take it. And then there goes the problem. Yep, that's all I got.
What I'd like to do is everybody take a look at this for next week, Vivian U. Thomas, and give any edits to Christina, and she can get that circulated back out to us, our different comments and edits. Move it forward if that's the decision that the board wants to make. But I do agree, it's like we're starting to get more and more questions, you know, people request for, you put this sign up, and you put that sign up, and it's creating a bigger monster.
What was the, what was the size of the signs? Okay, that I was just looking for, okay?
What do you mean? Because there's different sizes.
Yeah, for different areas. When I'm looking at this one for the temporary signs, not to exceed one and a half feet in area, a height of three feet above natural grade in residential areas, eight square feet area, and a height of six feet above natural grade in natural and non-residential districts.
What section are you looking at?
I'm looking at signs, I'm in, I'm in five, temporary signs. Two, item two, A2. The first page.
Yeah, not to exceed one and a half square feet in area, so one and a half square feet.
And it's saying a height of three feet above grade in residential areas and eight square feet area, and height six feet above natural grade in non-residential. I just realized that was the size.
Right. Yeah, the second half of that doesn't really make sense.
Right. It's like a four-by-eight piece of.
Well, because that's not really a temporary sign at that point.
Well, that's under real estate signs.
Right.
I think that one only pertains to real estate.
Okay.
Yeah.
But yeah, it does.
So, yeah, that's specific to real estate signs. And then temporary signs not exceeding two feet by three feet pertaining to events of general interest such as auctions, bazaars, benefits, community events, elections, outings, weddings, yard sales, similar events. So that C under the temporary signs are at four. So that's the size, two feet by three feet is the maximum for a temporary sign. And then it says signs should come down within 24 hours after the event.
That's a big sign. I don't think I've ever seen a sign that big.
There's some plywood ones out there.
The vigil ones, I was just wondering if they are exceeding that right now.
I'm looking at the Historical Society, their signs are all small. They're, I guess they're 16 inches by.
A lot of them are like one and a half by.
Yeah, the vigil ones are kind of big though.
Right, and the Snapper Derby ones, those typically like.
That's probably why that's there.
Right, those, yeah.
The one-time deal.
Okay. Yeah, my edit just kind of takes that whole section out. It just says temporary signs may only be placed on private property. So then.
Anything else on this? No. So we'll put this back on for next week. Board member reports.
When the DEC issues a shellfish closure, it was requested that perhaps the town could request of the DEC, why? From the DEC, yes, an explanation of why the closure.
Typically following heavy rain events, right? It's usually runoff-related for most.
Yeah, or sometimes they're, you know, longer in duration, and that's all just, and that the notification comes to the town and we hear, that's all.
Okay, I'll reach out.
Next up was the Royer bulkhead application. The, this is the bulkhead that was illegally built without a permit. They submitted an application, but it was deficient, and we still don't have follow-up. I don't know status of that, it just.
Sorry. So what we're waiting on now is the plans that they did, you know, as-built plans. So what was submitted isn't really sufficient, and it doesn't match to what they said reported with the DEC.
Besides.
Correct. So I reached back out to the homeowner, the contractor, those documents.
It's a major discrepancy, isn't it? We turn a quote. Okay.
It's a major discrepancy, there's about 100 feet of bulkhead that are in question.
Correct, so apparently they only fixed, it doesn't match what they said they fixed and what they did fix, the reference there. They didn't submit any plans to the DEC as-built, so they said they only submitted photos, so that's right, you know, between the DEC, the homeowners, what they submitted there, what the DEC has and what they do not have. We're still.
Toronto bulkhead, Gardeners Bay Drive. It's a stone, they're just raising what was there, that's all. The stack of stone they're raising, nothing, they're using the material that's there, they're just raising it. The WMAC was 7-0 to approve. The Green Ram Island bulkhead, they want to add sistering, up pilings to the bulkhead, existing bulkhead. That was, they had no problem with that, they 7-0 to approve. The Vitale Dock application in Manantic Creek, it did not conform to the setbacks at all. So they're going to go back to the drawing board, I think. I don't know, he's gonna, Jack is gonna have to go back to the applicant and discuss it with them, but it doesn't, doesn't conform to the setbacks.
Well, they also, the applicant requested to table it for now, and basically.
Yeah.
Hold it, pull it until they figure out what's going on.
Yes, yes. Then there was a discussion regarding the Tetonis Dock. The WMAC was talking about a further reduction in non-conformity, and Jack wanted to do some more calculations, or he wanted to look at it further, perhaps discuss it with the owner, and then it'll come back to the WMAC for further review.
Yeah, we have that continuation on the public hearing in September, so will they meet before that meeting?
No, it's September 29th.
Okay, I wasn't sure when we bumped it to.
They, they had rough drafts, or not rough drafts, a final draft of proposed mooring waitlist procedure, approved Condon Creek waitlist procedure, and rules and regulations for docks. And the first two approved 7-0, and the third one 6-1 for approval on those that they want to give to the town. It's code updates.
Do you know, do you know when they're going to get those to us?
They're just, the final review, and then they'll submit.
Okay, get it onto our agenda.
Meg, do you want to do CHB?
Community Housing Board, we just went through, we got an update on fund balance, which is 1.2 million. Update on the ADUs, we have 16 in process, two are complete, two more are rapid cut, and then a whole bunch are in, or say two or three are in contract, and then there's a whole bunch that are still working through the process. The last, like, open hours at the library for the ADU plus-one grant program was very well-attended, so they were excited about that because people were showing interest, and a few more people signed up. The window for this current round of funding will be closing in September, so if you are interested in applying in this funding cycle, September, I believe 19th is the end date for that. There will hopefully be a second round of funding coming later on, but for now, this is the first window of funding, so that will be closing. There was an email that got sent out by CDCLI, which created confusion because they're the ones who are managing the ADU grant, caused a little confusion because it hadn't been proofed and it wasn't quite accurate, so then they sent out another email clarifying what they meant. Still working on the MOU, we have a meeting on Thursday, a small internal working group to go over the MOU, that is the memorandum of understanding to move the community housing project forward. So that's coming up this week. And that, did I miss anything? Then I think that's most.
That's kind of everything. This meeting on Thursday, I guess it's the lawyers, Steve Lemington, who's staying on in this, on this one project with us, and then the CHB's lawyer, and then you and me, Meg.
Yep.
And whoever wants to come from the Community Housing Board.
Right. It'll be a smaller group from the Housing Board, probably Liz and Phil, maybe Rand, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It'll be less than a quarrel for everybody, so it's just going to be a working group.
It's a legal session.
Yes, a legal session. So I think that's it for the Housing Board.
Oh, one last thing there. They said the fund balance is 1.2, but they were expecting 150K to come in shortly.
Over the next few months or something like that. That's good.
The August meeting on the 28th, that's still in place, correct?
The meeting with CDCLI.
Yes.
That's on the 26th.
Yeah, it's at the work session.
Yes, it's at our work session.
So it's on the 26th, okay.
So did, did you let the Community Housing Board know just in case they want to attend the work session? Put a blast out to them.
Yeah, we'll send it up to you email. I think that they know about it, but we'll just confirm that before the meeting.
Yeah, so be an opportunity for the public to meet the team.
Right.
And they're going to have a small presentation here, so.
Yeah. So I think that's all I had for Housing Board, unless then I missed anything.
No, no, I think that's it.
I think we talked about the irrigation code last week. WAC, who wants to talk about it? Gordon, did you want to cover WAC or should I?
Yeah, I need to, yeah, bye.
Okay, so we went over drought status regulations for a long time, trying to figure out the best way to get that information to the public, and also how to determine what drought level we're in, so still working on that, has a few little edits to go, I think. And then discuss the budget that they're going to put forward to Amber, and then we talked about water testing in September. They're going to start a project combined with the school, so the school students are actually going to be taking water samples around the public and testing them for salinity. So that's going to be a project in conjunction with the school science program that'll happen in September, so getting prepared for that. Looking into working with Suffolk County Department of Health, Office of Water Resources, for their water testing programs, just coordinating with them possibly in the future, so that's still something that's on the table. I think that's everything. Oh, we had the first well was installed for the saltwater testing program through USGS. So if you noticed a new well down at Wade's Beach, or that giant red rectangle with the yellow pillars around it so you can't run it over, that is the new well put in by USGS for the saltwater intrusion study that's going to be conducted. That's the first part. The second part is going to be a well over in Sajem's Woods. And then the third part of that study is magnetic resonance in the near-shore area to see how far in saltwater is coming. So that'll be a different phase of the project, and we're still working that out with them. We're waiting on contracts from USGS for a bunch of different things, so we discussed that as well. Did I miss anything?
The only thing, probably just to mention is because of the concern of being in Sajem's Woods, that that well is being used just for saltwater intrusion, it's not a well that can be operated, and it's not for testing of drinking water, its sole purpose is for water, saltwater intrusion.
And also, they didn't have to do any clearing in order to put that well in. They had to trim a few branches, but there's no clearing that's happening in Sajem's in order to put that well in. So just so people are aware, that's what's happening with that.
I thought one of the interesting things of the WAC meeting is that they, you know, the committee is working hard to get some things together, and there obviously were landscapers present there at that meeting, okay, and someone brought up the question, okay, have, you know, questioned whether they had brought in or had some consultation with a hydrologist, okay, in determining some of these things, okay? And I thought it kind of interesting because, you know, a hydrologist we haven't brought in really for anything, for a real hydrologist, and it seemed to be something that I think the board will be looking at, I guess, in the future, okay, with, when we have issues on water quality, okay, and what impacts things have. The only other thing I had, okay, was that, the other, no, I guess that's basically it. You did, you took my job away, okay, so, thank you.
You're welcome. I did want to mention, we do have an island-wide irrigation study that was conducted, I want to say in 2017, maybe a little longer, by Gatlin, I believe, so we do have that, so if anyone wants to look at an island-wide irrigation study, it does exist, we have it in our records. Then a couple other things, this weekend is a super busy weekend with lots of fun things. We have the Green Expo and the Craft Fair on Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00. The Green Expo is going to be a lot of committees, community organizations giving out information to the public, where you can get your questions answered, it's always a lot of fun. And that's at the school in the same area as the Craft Fair. So the Craft Fair is taking up a really big one, and the Green Expo is going to be down the side between the parking lot and the main fair. So if you have questions for any of your committees, or you want some information on what we've been working on, that's a great time to come and get it. There's also the Duck Race on Sunday, that's from 12:00 to 1:00. And then the Green Options Committee is hosting a solar house tour on Sunday from 1:00 to 4:30 for the gathering at the Presbyterian Church from 4:30 to 5:30 to kind of get together and talk about what everybody saw. So that is going to be a lot of fun. It's similar to like Artsy, where you just kind of drive to all the different houses and look at what they have. So these are homeowners who put solar in, and they want to share their experience and how it's benefited them and what it was like, tell you what went well, what didn't go well. So it's kind of a nice educational tour to see how it's working. And then the Presbyterian Church, because they have solar on their roof, they are participating, and they've also opened their doors so that everybody can congregate after the tour when everybody's driven around, and come get together and ask questions of each other, and just kind of brainstorm. So it's a fun, busy weekend.
And also, just as a PSA, the partnership between Shelter Island Yacht Club and the Rec Department kicked off yesterday, where we're bringing, I think, 20, we had 25 kids yesterday, local kids who have come down to the club to learn about.
Where we're bringing, I think 20, we had 25 kids yesterday, local kids who have come down to the club to learn about boats and waterfront and being safe around the water. And well, hopefully, I think today they actually got in the boats and went sailing. Fortunately, the weather seems to be turning a little bit with the revenue of the hurricane coming up. So we'll see how the program goes for the rest of the week. But at least we got it launched and we had a, an amazing response to the offer. I mean, we put aside 30 spots for local kids and I think we have 30 kids.
That's great.
Anything else? We jumped over to?
No, I'm done.
Oh, if I interrupted, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, is anything else? Gordon, do you want to go next or talk about capital planning?
You know, do I, yes, let's stick a couple of things, okay? With Suffolk County Water, okay? Okay, all right, I got, I got a couple of things on my agenda, so let me just start with one of them, okay? There was some conversation also at the WAC over Suffolk County Water with extending their main, obviously from the wet, from the Pine Barrens all the way into Southold, okay? And there's been a lot of articles written on it and the pros and cons and the community seems to be, more 70% of Southold's water is used for, or most is used for irrigation, okay? So it, it seems to be, there's a lot of conversation, the public as well as the boards and different people, okay? And it's something that, these open forums are bringing different things to the table. I mean, and it's interesting when we look around, as I saw today, something that was in the, let me see what paper this was. It had to deal with housing in Greenport, okay? And the proposed planning board and framing and addressing housing and vacancies and so forth. It, it seems like there's a lot, a lot of public participation in some of these really critical areas, okay? And I'm hoping that at some given time, as this housing thing moves along, that we can get more public participation and have a, a good exchange of good ideas of what we should do, okay? But going back to the other item that I wanted to talk about is the, the center, the center wastewater project, okay? That we, trying to get the AAs going here in the center for the two particular buildings. The, the, the Police Department and Justice Hall. And the question came up about looking at the overall plan. I think Amber, you, you were there this morning and we had discussed, you know, looking at the complex, looking at, doing a review of what we would like to see. A, a study of all the municipal buildings and what that plan may look like. So I think we left off, okay, that they was going to be initiating, moving forward with getting some of the previous studies that have been done. So that they can be a better understanding of what we want the town to look like in the future as, before we start, as we're moving forward, okay? I thought that was a, a pretty important thing and. That's it.
Also had the CDBG person come in, Rose Marie For, and she just went over the timing of CDB, Community Block Development Grants. How, the timing of those, because it is always very confusing because we start the process in the fall to solicit public input on what they would like to see happen with any potential grant monies. Then we come up with something, this year, our focus with the 2025 money is to handicap accessibility for Goat Hill, the building up there. And so we started that process, we had put some things on last year in December and then we pivoted to that because we figured that, we thought there was a greater need to try and get that project moving along. Because when people need to get up there for any events that are up there, you know, access to the clubhouse, they, they have to roll people up, you know, put them into golf carts, drive them up around, roll them in, it's very cumbersome. So we've been working on this project and we're still waiting for the CDBG to get the approvals and the money designated from HUD, which is where they get their funding from. So that we can maybe start the project in September and it has to be completed by next August 31st. So it was just helpful to have, to go over that kind of timeline because it is, you know, a year and a half, almost two years when we start the process and get to the finish line or something.
I have a couple of questions coming to mind, talking about housing. I know some years ago, we talked about the South Ferry property. Was the Phase Two ever done on that? It was.
Yes.
Okay. Did they do water quality testing at that time?
I believe that was, I can't remember if that was part of the Phase One or the Phase Two environmental, but they, they did some, I thought they planned, I thought Phase One was when they did some test.
And they did a, you know, I'm sure they did a Phase Two because of the highway department being.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where's that report, I'm just curious.
I think Joe would have access to it, but I believe once we get, you know, the MOU done, that will be given to.
The only reason I ask is I'd hate to have some kind of a roadblock come up when we're getting ready to go. I know one misunderstanding that I'm opposed to housing, unlike the rest of the board here, we need to move it forward. The other question is the wetlands revision. Where is that?
That is, I think Stephen was finished looking over it, it's going to get sent to the committees.
It's going to go to the planning board and the.
Yeah, it'll go to the planning board and the CAC. What we wanted them to do.
So we have that, he is completing? No, I mean, we have the draft from Stephen.
Yeah, we have a final, a final draft, I asked him to look over it, whether he has any comments, because he will be shepherding that legislation process forward.
Okay.
And we're just kind of waiting for the planning board to conclude site plan, so they don't have two legislations at the same time.
Right. So once they get us their site plan notes, we'll give them wetlands to not overwhelm them with too many things at once.
I'd like to move that forward, there's been a long time coming. I mean, that's been slow walking, so.
No, it's, it's finally out of subcommittee, so that's a good sign. The other thing that we have on the, for the special meeting is the, for the opioid grant, we've been talking to them about a program in conjunction with Thrive Recovery. And there's going to be on October 11th, a wellness, a recovery and wellness retreat at Camp Quinnipet. So you'll see the first resolution for today is just allowing me to sign the agreement with them, that we can actually have the program posted there. So that way we're covered with insurance. Yeah, that's all, all that I have. So what I'd like to do is adjourn the work session and go into a special meeting.
Do you need a second? Yes, you have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Albert, do you want to start us off with resolutions, please?
Sure. Whereas the town of Shelter Island is an active participant in the Suffolk County opioid grant program funded through the New York State opioid settlement. And whereas eligible uses of said funds include programs and services that promote recovery, wellness and prevention for individuals affected by substance use disorders. And whereas the town's social worker in partnership with Thrive Recovery Center is organizing a recovery and wellness retreat on October 11th, 2025, at Camp Quinnipet and Retreat Center for residents of Shelter Island and the East End. And whereas securing the use of Quinnipet Camp and Retreat Center for this event requires the town to execute a facility use agreement. And whereas costs associated with the facility rental are anticipated to be reimbursable under the Suffolk County opioid grant program. Now therefore be it resolved that the supervisor is hereby. Or her duly, excuse me. Now therefore be it resolved that the supervisor or her duly appointed designee is hereby authorized to execute the social work retreat group contact with Quinnipet Camp and Retreat Center and to take all necessary actions to ensure compliance with the requirements of the Suffolk County opioid grant program and the New York State opioid settlement funding guideline. So move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Whereas the Shelter Island Chamber of Commerce has submitted an outdoor assembly application for permission to hold an annual duck race at 194 North Ferry Road on August 24th, 2025, from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM. Whereas the Chamber of Commerce also requested approval to place signage advertising the event and has submitted all required documents. And whereas the town board has reviewed and considered and said, said requests, now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby approve said request with the condition that all signs shall be removed within 24 hours of the event. So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Whereas the Chamber of Commerce has submitted a request to place signage advertising the upcoming country and craft fair scheduled to be held on August 23rd, 2025. And now whereas the town board has reviewed and considered said request, now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby approves the placement of signage with the condition that all signs shall be removed within 24 hours after the event. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Whereas the Shelter Island Historical Museum has submitted an outdoor assembly application for permission to hold a regiment encampment and reenactment on September 6th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And whereas all required documentation has been submitted, now therefore be it resolved that said request is hereby approved. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Whereas Shelter Island Lions Club has submitted an outdoor assembly application for permission to hold an annual Snapper Derby at 40 North Ferry Road on August 27th, 2025, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And whereas the Lions Club has requested approval to place signage advertising the event and has submitted all the required documents. And whereas the town board has reviewed and considered this said request, now therefore be it resolved that the town board hereby approves this said request with the condition that all signs shall be removed within 24 hours after the event. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, I have a motion to close the special meetings. Second, all in favor? And I will now make a motion to close the work session.
So move.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody.